So this next section is going to be done by our financial advisor, Mr. Dan Wegmiller, and our director of finance, CFO, John Locke. So they are going to present more about the debt aspect of things to help council understand, the public understand more about that when we're looking at the CIP and any debt that we incur. So with that, I'm going to pass this over to Mr. Locke, who will then work with Mr. Wegmiller. You're going to have to hold it right here.
Dan Wegmiller of Specialized Public Finance, the city's financial advisor. I'm just going to walk through some debt 101-type explanations, just to give you some background. Thank you. So a lot of this is going to overlap with what you've heard already. How do cities borrow for capital projects? Generally, capital improvements that are not cash funded. And I think every good strategy is blending cash and where you need to finance things is a combination. It's not one or the other. Cities can also, or are limited, where you can't just go to the bank and apply for a loan and try to borrow money through your local depositories unless you repay that within the current fiscal year. To borrow money beyond the current fiscal year, the city must issue a debt obligation. To do that, it's sold for cash to obviously fund a project. But the important part is the Attorney General reviews the obligation after its approval. The security is valid, incontestable, and binding obligation. That's important because if you went, and we've seen this, it's been quite a few years, but occasionally, small entities will go to the local bank, work out a deal to fund some project, and then want to refinance it. If you haven't gone through the Attorney General approval process, then you're limited on your ability to restructure or refinance. So it's important to understand that step. The commonly utilized financing alternatives, and what's interesting, these are all pretty consistent. Tax notes is the newest obligation, and that dates back to around 1997. I think that was authorized. But generally speaking, the first type of debt is general obligation bonds. They can be done for general purposes, parks, streets, public safety, anything you want to put on a ballot, you generally can. The requires a vote of the people. Source of payment is generally taxes, although you could choose to pay from another source. But generally, it hits the taxes. And then the interest rate is usually the lowest interest rate you can get as a municipality just because of that ability and actual legal obligation to levy the tax to pay the debt. So that's the strongest. Certificates of obligation are almost a carbon copy to some degree of general obligation bonds and revenue bonds combined. They're general purposes. They don't require voter approval. However, there is a publication requirement that has to be done. And during that publication requirement, if there's a petition submitted by the residents, they can actually be called to a vote. I haven't seen that happen, but maybe a couple times in the last 30 years in different places, but it's still out there. Source of payment can be taxes or revenues, and that's something you all have done year over year, is combine your issuances into certificates of obligation. You save on issuance costs. As the bottom box shows, it also garners the lowest interest rate available. So from that perspective, it's a pretty flexible instrument. I'll get into more of the legislative impact to all of these options in a minute. But that's kind of an evolving and changing landscape of what the legislature is seeking to restrict or put in place over the last few sessions. Revenue bonds, it's based on any enterprise system. So typically, water, sewer, electric, they don't require voter approval. Source of payment is obviously the revenues, and the interest rate is typically a little higher than the general obligation bond, just because of the fluctuation in the revenue stream. You know, water, sewer, electric, there's no guarantee what people are going to consume. So that variable obviously impacts you. One thing on revenue bonds, it's just because it's a revenue stream doesn't mean you can necessarily debt fund something off of it. The smaller the revenue stream, the harder it is to create that obligation because stormwater, drainage, to a degree, is more challenging. You also, if you go the revenue bond route, it sometimes restricts the funding that you can draw from it because you can't leverage it dollar for dollar like you can on taxes. Tax notes are a general purpose as well. Voter authorization is not required. Source of payment is typically taxes, although we've seen revenues utilized, just like on certificates of obligation. The interest rate is similar to general obligation bonds as well. And then lease purchase obligations, which are not on the debt side, they're operations and maintenance supported, as noted, and they're a little higher interest rates because they are subject to that appropriation year over year. The timeline for each of these, the general obligation bonds, because they're voter approved, you have to think about the cycle of the efforts leading up to the bond election. So May elections have to be called by late February. November elections have to be called in August. So when you factor in the months leading up to the election, and then usually 70 or 60 to 70 days to sell the bonds once they're approved, that kind of gives you the timeframe that you have to build in a lot of different expectations on interest rates and other things because a lot can change in that timeframe of five to 12 months. Once bonds are authorized, you don't have to issue them all at one time. You can phase them in as you have capacity, as you all have talked about already today, capacity for the project, both readiness for the project or the ability to pay for it. So those are two key elements. Certificates of obligations are 45 to 60 days. You all, as the council, authorize this to start the process. The notice, and there's one edit to this slide, the authorization and publication, the notice was changed from 30 days to 45 days by the legislature recently. So you have basically two more weeks that you have to publish that. If there's no petition, the items placed on the agenda authorize a sale, and we can have funds 30 days after that. So you can see certificates move quite a bit quicker and get you the funding that you need. Tax notes move probably even quicker because there's no notice requirement. So literally, council can direct staff to notify us to go fund a project. We can move pretty quick on that. The limitation on tax notes is seven years. They have to be financed over seven years. General obligation bonds and certificates of obligation can go out to 30 or 40 years, although traditionally are done more in the 20 to 30-year range. GEO bonds, again, requires an election for their passage. Issued for any purpose, not to exceed 40 years. Various items are listed there. Secured by your full faith and credit, meaning a court would literally force you to levy the tax if you chose for some reason not to levy it. The obligations are that strong, and that's why they get such a low interest rate. They know that will take place. The tax rate used to pay debt service is not subject to rollback, so there's that protection. One thing I'll note here that we don't list, but if you take something to a bond election and it fails, the legislature now restricts you from doing any type of nonvoted debt for three years on that project. So what's important is that protection to keep you from moving a project forward if it fails by the voters also kind of puts you on notice that if you have a project that is non-discretionary, say a bridge washout or a road washout, if you put that on a bond election and it fails, you've got to be prepared for what the alternative is. So that's a significant piece of legislature change recently. Certificates of obligation, notice is required. As I mentioned, that 31 days is now 45 days. The election, the petition, is 5%. The registered voters can produce a petition. If the election is required, the election is tied to general election dates, so you'd have to go for May or November. Securitization is the tax pledge with a specific revenue backstop issued for any public purpose, again, not to exceed 40 years. And that tax pledge, again, makes it equal to general obligation. The tax rate used to pay debt service is not subject to rollback either. So again, a lot of discussion between what do we vote and what do we don't put on a ballot is tied to often discretionary versus non-discretionary type projects, and that's what you all have done year over year in looking at certificates of obligations. Before I leave the certificates of obligation, I got an update yesterday on what the legislature is looking at doing. One of the things they're looking at doing is trying to restrict further what you can use certificates of obligations for. Public safety, streets, roads are still within that framework. They're also looking for more specificity within the notice and locking you into what you spend the money on. I think that's important for flexibility that you, the beauty of whether it's a bond election or a certificate of obligation, as has been discussed, is your flexibility to, you know, these are all planning numbers, right? And once you have a bond election pass or a CO authorized, once you go out to get the funds in, if prices move, you want some latitude to work between projects, maybe, to complete a project. Those are all issues that I think the legislature is looking at, and we're hoping they still leave you some of that flexibility with anything they come back with because, once you have bond funds stuck in a bucket, that's not a fun situation, especially if natural movements and projects cause other costs to go up. Limited tax notes, again, back in around 97, I think it was, 96, 97, the legislature gave you an extra tool, which is pretty handy. It's limited to seven years, though. I think some of the thinking was, you're not going to take on a major project that really needs 20 or 30 years financing on a seven-year basis. So we often see these used for equipment. We also see them for facilities, or if you have a certain amount of funding that's been sitting there in the debt service account. We've seen us go out and sell some obligations to build even a facility using some of the cash flow that you have and support the tax notes. So they're a useful tool, but again, the seven-year term kind of limits them on where you use them most of the time. System revenue bonds, again, water and wastewater and electric and sanitation are probably the biggest things we see on a revenue bond basis. I will say, I know Tyler mentioned the impact, the fee update, and it's been talked about, rates, having rates in place. When you do revenue bonds, you have to, the last sub-bullet, or the first sub-bullet, maintain revenue sufficient to pay bonds and operations. But the other piece of that is, you have to have revenue over and above what you need called coverage. So where a tax pledge, you need a dollar, you tax a dollar. On a system revenue bond, you typically have around 1.2 to 1.7 times coverage. So you're drawing in, setting rates to bring in more money to deal with the potential fluctuations in revenue based on, let's say, water and sewer, wet or dry years will impact that. So that's a big piece of it. Electric and deregulation really impacted folks' ability to go out and just sell electric revenue bonds because the rating is so much lower, it's going to cost you more money versus the certificates of obligation, which is what you all currently do. So the revenue bonds are definitely an option, and I think it's important with what the legislature is doing is to always have your systems in a healthy place so you have that option if you needed it. But hopefully, they'll give you the flexibility to make the right choices for your community. Refunding bonds, from time to time, especially over the last many years, when rates just kept trending down, we've done many different refinancings for the city. It's just like refinancing a mortgage, the examples earlier about the home, same thing here. The debt you have is much like carrying a mortgage, and we watch that, and we review proposals that want to refinance and make sure it fits what your long-term plans are. Key steps in the financing process, the capital planning that was talked about earlier is key. Just knowing how we structure, you know, the graphs earlier about the structure of the debt, level payments for the next few years on, I think it was stormwater and then it tears down, and it's a perfect example. If your debt service payments are flat, you either need an increase in revenue, which can come through growth or come through rate changes, or we just need to identify when those next opportunities are. So that planning is important, and we've worked with your staff for years and look forward to working with John here on the same multi-year planning so you can kind of see how things shift and move and what you can anticipate. I'm not going to bother you with all the steps in this block, but it basically just puts into a chart what I've been saying as far as the develop the plan, the models we run. We have presentations, a bond sale, and closing. So it's that, whether it's a five to 12-month for general obligation bonds or a, you know, 60 to 90-day period for COs or nonvoted debt. Bond ratings are critical to your borrowing potential, and we've seen it. The first thing I'll say about a bond rating is it's completely subjective, which is sometimes very frustrating because it takes a committee of individuals from the bond rating agency. Sometimes they're sitting in Dallas, sometimes they're sitting in New York, Chicago, or San Francisco. And when they get on a committee, you know, they obviously at times have a knowledge of what's happening all over the country, but they also have a bias probably to what they're living in personally and depending on what region of the country they're at. So we make the best effort every time to fully disclose and get them, your analysts that we visit with, whether it's on a conference call or in person. And the good news is, we can start doing it in person now. We've had one recently, that Cedar Park had come in, and because we really want to get the rating agencies review, the first sub-bullet pointed under the second bullet, economy, debt levels, financial performance, and management. Those are the four areas they look at. You can have strong economy like Texas does compared to many other places. You can have manageable debt levels, although in Texas, all debt levels, for the most part, are elevated. And the reason for that is so much of what you have to fund comes from the local level. In other states, they sometimes have state bond banks that fund what you need and kick it down to the local level. Here, we fund schools, cities, counties, all at the local level. So compared nationally, debt levels are elevated in Texas compared to others. But Texas also has some of the highest bond ratings because of the economy and the financial performance and the management. So for you all, you're at the AA rating, so you're two notches from the highest rating. And so that is outstanding. That's a very strong position to be in, especially for a university town that has a lot of students, and they look at wealth levels and different aspects of the economy that weigh into it. But that management aspect is where, when we can get them in front of you, and they kind of develop an understanding of what your experience is, what your team's experience is, really goes a long way to get that rating at that highest level possible. My examples are Williamson County, Round Rock, and Cedar Park are all now AAA-rated entities. They all are considered high debt, but they also are high-growth areas. And so we really focused, when we met with rating agencies over the last 20 years, to highlight the economy, the financial performance, and the management. And we conceded debt was going to be high, but that's because you're putting in infrastructure to be supported, supporting the growth. So it's really, that drives how much a bond sells for, is that rating scale there. Financial trends are so important, they look back, and then they also look at what you forecast and your planning. So it's all very important that not only your historical trends are good, but what you project through your financial models.
Do you recall, did we make it to AA?
When did we get the AA status? I don't have the exact year, but the rating has been moving up over the, you know, you all have never seen a pressure back downward. When I started working with you, you were in the single A category, and that was back in the 90s, and it's just gradually moved up the ladder. You know, and that's a great question because it's a, it's not like climbing your ladder you have at home where the steps are very, you know, relatively close. These are large steps because when they assign a rating or that next level rating, they're taking into account usually a future for, you know, moving forward. When Cedar Park just got to AAA this past year, it's been on, it's been a topic of conversation for 10-plus years. And the rating, as I said, it's a subjective process. So part of that subjectivity is, you always feel like you're almost in a gotcha. When you have growth and positive growth in values and increasing revenues, that's great. But if you talk to a rating analyst, they'll spin it back and say, but are you capable of managing the growth? Are you capable of handling the growth? Can you deal with what needs to happen? So it's one of those things, it feels like every time you get in that spot, they always have a counter for you.
And one positive thing to talk about is that, you know, particularly in the finance area, we've had a lot of transition. And so during COVID, and a lot of municipalities, you were seeing a decline in some of their ratings, and the fact that we've had steady leadership, we've had Mr. Wegmiller, who's been consistent, you know, throughout and really understands and knows our community well, is we were not one of those that did that. You know, we did go out for debt, as you know, every year, and it has been something that, you know, we're very proud of, that we've been able to withstand through the transition and make sure that we still kept that steady rating and had a positive, you know, finding every single time they come back and give us our ratings. So I just wanted to mention that because it is a testament to making sure that we always have good, you know, things that we can use to be able to show good financial management, good steady, stable management.
I think that's a great point. They're always in a position of knowing that you're coming back every year or so with your projects, and that's because the communication's been good and the planning has reflected The, just again, local income levels compared to national levels and financial policies and long-term plans, it's what they look for. That's the financial performance and the management aspect they look at. The one other thing I'll mention, you all have done public improvement districts, and I think those have been managed well. You all have not just, you know, gotten excited every time someone's come in. You've used discernment. You've accepted some and you've passed on some. And those are the management decisions. When the developers come in and say, this is assessment debt, it won't impact your bond rating, that's relatively true. But if you, and I think this market is a critical time with housing market slowing, you have to take stock in what development is needed and what that paces, and that's some of the private sector to do that. But if a developer pushes you on all that they need, you know, it's good to, you know, use that discernment and make sure before you sell bonds, just on an assessment basis with no rating, if something happened to that deal and it turned upside down, it could come back and affect your rating just from a management aspect. This is, turn it back over to John.
Thank you. The next couple of slides will bring in a lot of what Mr. Condor was speaking about earlier. This is looking at our general fund capacity, and the two most important variables in these slides are our taxable value growth. That's something that Mayor Houston was asking about earlier. So we're looking at our taxable value growth over the next 10 years. So that's a factor into this, as well as the slide where we showed that right now we're at about a 70-30 tax rate split where 30% of our tax rate is being used for debt service. So this bond capacity slide assumes that we stay there so that we use the same amount of money that we're currently using for operations on operations and the same amount for debt towards debt. And so what you can see with this is the black in the background is our debt capacity. So this is, it takes into consideration what Mr. Condor is talking about, how we have debt that will mature, and when it falls off, and that gives us additional capacity. In addition to that, it's taken into consideration our taxable value growth so that even if we stay at our current tax rate, as tax values grow, that gives us additional capacity as well. So those two factors is what provides this capacity that you see in the black. The blue color is the general fund CIP. This is in the most recent CIP that city council approved. Those projects that are in that CIP document are in the blue columns. One of the things that was touched on earlier is that stormwater doesn't have capacity until about 2028, just under the current rate structure that is in stormwater. This general fund does have capacity to take on those stormwater projects for the next three years. So if that's something that city council wanted to do, we could add the stormwater to the general fund and be able to fund those projects over the next three years. Once you get into 2026, there isn't capacity on the general fund to continue to absorb those stormwater projects, and that's why you only see the three years of the gray column, which is the stormwater capital projects. Another item that Mr. Condor had on the slide was the potential bond election. These are some of those projects that the city just isn't able to afford based on those variables that I started off with, just when you take into consideration our current tax rate that we dedicate to debt and our estimated taxable value growth. There isn't enough capacity there for all of the projects when we hit 2026. You know, the total there is about $122 million. The largest piece of that is that City Hall project that's making $80 million of that amount. So you see that in just a dashed red, because that's not a given. That would be something that city council is interested in discussing, a bond election. That is an estimated timeline of when that might occur, is in the 2026 timeframe. Then, as you see, as you go through the remainder, dependent upon the decisions that are made with stormwater, maybe in 2027, there may not be enough capacity to cover those projects. In general, the general fund is able to meet those, the current 10-year CIP project list with the addition of that bond election. This slide just has that same information. It just removes the stormwater aspect from it. So in the event that the decision is made not to use the general fund capacity for stormwater, there is some additional capacity in the general for stormwater, there is some additional capacity in the general fund. As you can see, it could even take care of some of those projects that are being proposed as a potential bond election project. That's the end of the presentation. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, the only thing is the, is the tax base, increase in tax base, and get out, you know, the crystal ball to see, you know, where it's coming, but we're approving a lot of new zoning for new projects. I see projects going out on land that didn't need to be rezoned in order for them to do their projects. So it looks like there's a lot more tax base going on the ground, and to, to talk only about the tax rate, not the base, is concerning me. So I'm hoping that that's, will be part of our budget policy discussion.
Definitely have that noted for us to discuss. And so now we're really at a point of what we really want to understand, just for purposes of today, is that, is there an interest in council to go ahead and bring this back either during budget policy or at a later time to talk about bond election? Timing, all of that, I mean, we wouldn't have, it wouldn't happen this fiscal year like we're, like we're talking about it, but we need to figure out when would be the fiscal year. And if it's not bond election, then how are we going to fund the CIP? What is going to be the strategies and direction in regard to those projects that are upcoming before the debt falls off in 2028, as Mr. Condor and Mr. Locke talked about?
I would think that we would want to talk about it. It might not be the first thing, and we might not spend a lot of time, but it seems to be like if we're, of course, this is supposed to be our long-range planning, and budget policy is supposed to be like the next year, maybe two. But still, if we're talking about, you know, year after next, I, I think that's something that we're going to need to address. We may say, no, we're not going to do it yet, but I think we need to at least talk about it. Counsel? Yes, to Mr. Leesner?
What are we saying yes to? Could we support of moving forward upon election, the timing of that, is this something that, you know, something like this, is it this fall or is it 2024?
I'm busy discussing, not necessarily having a bond election, but just a discussion.
Support of that as well?
And that's all we're asking for at this time. We know that that's a really big decision and it wouldn't be made this quickly. It'd take a lot more information. We just wanted to make sure, you know, we understood where council is, so that if you said, heck no, you know, we wouldn't spend the time on it, but if it's something you're interested in having more conversation about, let's talk about it at a later time for a decision to be made later about whether or not we pursue it or don't.
I have a question. You said earlier that the stormwater fund, we can get money from the general fund to the stormwater fund, but not the other way around? Am I correct?
Yes, sir. The, the general fund money, we would be able to use it for any public purpose, and the stormwater is a public purpose. On the stormwater side, it is restricted just for the stormwatering.
Yep, that's, that's good. Thank you.
Just like we did for years and years before we had a stormwater fee, that was general fund money, correct?
So there aren't any further questions about what we presented today? And again, let me just reiterate the reason we went through all of that. You're right, Mayor, this is about kind of looking at where we want to go as a city, what we want to do in the next coming years. But it was just really important to make sure council understands that in the context of the framework of our budget, because to do anything that council says you want us to do, we have to be able to fund and, and, you know, in order to do that successfully. So that's really the purpose of what we went through today, is just to make sure, we know you get questions from constituents, and we want to be sure that you have the information when they're asking, why are y'all making decisions about this? Why are y'all doing that? I don't understand this. And so we feel like that is important for us in terms of building trust with the community and understanding how their city government works, for them to have more information that they pull behind the curtain and can really see from a transparent point of view in terms of how the dollars are spent, you know, what we use them for, and then what are our challenges and constraints going forward. So we're not going to have easy times going forward, we understand that. And I hope that the council and the public also understand that when we bring these conversations to council, it's not one-sided. You know, we're not just thinking about what are the things we need to operate, we understand that it's also difficult and challenging in terms of trying to continue to tax our taxpayers and burden them. So we are looking at, how do we try to balance that, right? But we understand and know that there are projects and things that the community and those neighborhoods are really relying upon in order to have us implement, and so we try to find a way to do that. So that's, that's really what we wanted to drive home this morning before we get into the strategic planning part of the, the session for the rest of today and tomorrow. So do you have any further questions?
It wasn't a question, I'm just concerned, and this is perhaps somewhat out of our controls, what the state legislature is going to do with perhaps mandating some exemptions and how that's going to affect us, and we will not know the result of that in February, but that's just something else to keep on our radar screen, and some, there may be some factors outside of our control.
Absolutely. Okay, so without any further questions, team, is there anybody that wanted to mention anything today that, or at this point that we may have failed to emphasize, or something that just kind of occurred to you before we move on to the next part of our session? I'm not seeing anybody, no takers. So where we want to go with this discussion next, Mayor and council, is we want to get into the strategic planning part of, of the visioning session. And so I know lunch is going to be here, Mr. Vino said about 11:30. So if y'all are okay, what we would like to do is go ahead and start introducing the goals that we have put forward for your consideration, and then we'll get into kind of where we go from that in terms of getting your feedback and input after lunch, but we can go ahead and get started with just laying things out and teeing up that strategic plan for you, so that we can make the most use of our time. Does that sound okay? So when we, when we developed the document, and you should have the document, and Ms. Chantel Seymour is going to help us facilitate this portion, because we want all of you to be able to actively participate. So she'll facilitate, and we do have Ms. Fontenot and Mr. Miegel that are here to kind of help make sure that we're also capturing anything that we hear from council. So basically, you know, we're going to go through and, and, you know, get your feedback on things, but then we'll also keep a parking lot if there's something that maybe doesn't fit within one of these that we need to address at a later time. But want council to understand and know that we didn't develop these, these proposed goals just out of nowhere. We really did try to make sure that we were looking at, you know, prior plans and public input process, council direction, the capital improvements program, our comprehensive master plan and strategic plans, the community survey results that, you know, our public just participated in. We wanted to make sure that we were gauging the feedback we received there. And as Mr. Locke talked about, some of the unfunded budget requests, you know, there are every year those unfunded budget requests that our departments request, not only to be able to deal with the growth that we've had and the tremendous growth that we've had in our community, but also just to keep operations, you know, afloat in a way that best serves our community. We also looked at the city charter statement of goals, which are people, place, environment, economy, and public services. So that's how these draft plan goals were developed that are before you today for further discussion in the city council. So we'll get started with the vision statement, and this vision statement is directly out of the draft comprehensive plan. And what it says is that San Marcos is a community of diverse and inclusive neighborhoods that celebrates and protects the river and other rich natural, historical, and cultural assets, embraces its small-town feel, charm, and quality of life, and leverages strategic development to continue building a sustainable community with enhanced access and opportunities for people and businesses. So that's, that's the first, that's just the overall arching vision statement that we have here proposed, and that's where it came from. So now we'll get into the strategic goals. And the goals that we have put forward for consideration and discussion is, the first one is livability and sense of place, economic vitality, service and fiscal excellence, mobility and connectivity, and environmental sustainability. So what does livability and sense of place mean? What is that intended to capture? Because we understand that words are important and word choice is important, so we want to be sure that when the community is looking at these goals, that they understand the intent behind them and what they're meant to capture. So for purposes of discussion, livability and sense of place, we have that it cultivates a community that promotes inclusivity and belonging, has a unique sense of place due to our distinct natural, historical, and cultural assets, and commits to a high quality of life for all. So we know that, you know, when we're looking at things moving forward, we want it to be a livable place. We want to make sure that not only are we keeping our people resources in mind, and those are our community members, but also that we're honoring our history and preserving and protecting our natural resources and cultural assets at the same time. So the next one is going to be, well, for livability and sense of place, then, when we have the objectives or the outcomes that, what we took into consideration is that that would mean your comprehensive planning, strong community engagement, downtown vitality, arts, culture, and special events, parks, open space, and recreation, neighborhood preservation enhancement, as well as housing affordability. Those are those outcomes that we would see are proposing to go under livability and sense of place. The next goal is economic vitality. And by economic vitality, what we had in mind here was to foster a vibrant economic climate for our community through successful commercial centers, workforce development, training, and support of existing businesses. And with that, economic development is a key component, as we talked about, because that helps to make sure that we're diversifying our tax base and that we're looking at how we can help to alleviate some of the pressures that are on our existing taxpayers. We need to be able to foster good relationships and help our business community. San Marcos, we want to continue to promote that as a destination, since as we talked about, sales tax dollars are a very important part of our economy. We also need to make sure we're taking care of education and workforce development within our community, and then focus on intentional growth, not just growing for the sake of growth, but actually growing how we want to grow. The next one is service and fiscal excellence, and what we had in mind here was to deliver quality government services in a fiscally responsible manner with the professional workforce to meet the needs of our community, enhance the quality of life, and improve community safety. And, and this is going to be one where, you know, we really did try to focus on some of those government services that aren't traditionally on, on the lists. And so there's a lot of support services that go in to making sure that all of the other operations are able to work effectively. Those are going to be some of our internal service departments, our human resources, our IT, you know, legal, city clerk's office, finance. And so those are the ones that may not always get the same type of exposure, but they're very, very important for people being able to do their jobs effectively and be able to serve our community as best as possible. So under this goal, we have that core government service component that I just talked about, community safety, which is going to include your public safety, financial management, making sure that we do manage things appropriately in a fiscal, fiscal responsible manner of workforce retention and recruitment, support services, and infrastructure management. So moving on to the fourth one, mobility and connectivity. And what we mean by this is to safely and efficiently move people throughout the city and improve connectivity for people of all abilities. And the outcomes we see with this are multimodal transportation system, which as council knows, we've been working on very diligently over the last umpteen years in trying to improve mobility throughout our community. Also looking at the bicycle sidewalk and trail systems within our community, roadways and traffic operations, as well as public transit that we're really on, on the cusp of being able to, to make happen with, with Texas State University. And last, but definitely not least, we've got environmental sustainability, and that is to advance responsible stewardship of the community's natural, cultural, and historical resources through environmentally friendly policies and practices. And the outcomes we had in mind for, for discussion today are environmental stewardship, sustainable infrastructure, sustainable operations, and environmentally friendly growth. So again, these are, this is just really a starting point for you today. There is by no means any intention for y'all to just approve this as it is. We know there's going to be a lot of discussion, and we know that, you know, we really want to be sure that at the end of the day, today and tomorrow, that we have a plan that we are all bought into, unified and collectively, and to make sure that we feel that it's something that, you know, we can execute successfully by implementing in our community. And that's why it's going to be really important for our director's team to give you feedback as we go through and tell you if there are reasons why we may not be able to do a particular thing or something we might be able to do alternatively and why. So those are the things that, you know, I've given the director's team in terms of my expectations of them, is for them to be able to, you know, give you that feedback so that you can make informed decisions as we move forward, and that we all have a document that at the end, that we, we know is something that is going to be able to be done in a, in a much more prudent manner. So any questions over what I just went over? So I know we're a little bit ahead of schedule before lunch starts, and so our plan was to just lay this out so that y'all could kind of, you know, ponder it and, and let it sink in a little bit and get ready for then the second part of the day, which will be a lot more interaction between everybody and talking about this stuff and seeing where we want to go. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Chantel Seymour, so she can kind of guide us on, on where we want to go from here. Thank you. Tomorrow, we're going to continue to pick up wherever we leave off today. And then at the end of the day, we will do a wrap-up. We'll talk about, you know, because this is a new process, and we, we realize it's a new process, and we want to hear from council, was this effective in the way that we did it? Is there feedback that we can do to make things better, you know, next year? But then also, again, we want to be sure that it's the most effective use of your time as we look at budget policy and that you have the information you need as we go into that. So we're going to ask you for some feedback there at the end of the day tomorrow. So that's, that's what's on the agenda left, and so definitely just want to hear from you and get your feedback on where we go from here with these particular proposal goals. Thanks.
Thank you. Hello, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. You know I've been waiting patiently in a fact, right? Well, these are important, the goals that you all are talking about and the outputs to make them happen for this upcoming year, for this amazing thriving community is, is a big deal. It's critical. So I just want to give you a little bit of a layout of the land of what's going to happen after we come back from lunch today. We are going to get into groups, and inside your groups, we're going to give you some post-its, and we want to hear from you. This is a collaborative effort. One of the things that we are going for is one team, one voice. Want to say it with me? One team, one voice. I didn't really believe you. One more time. One team?
One.
Ah, I believe you now. Okay. So when we get back from lunch, we'll get into groups, and the first thing that we're going to take, we're going to take a look at the goals alone in a statements, this first page, that's in the handout that was given, and that was also emailed. Keep in mind, this is a draft, right? And this is where your voice comes in to help us formulate that one team. So what we're going to be doing will So what we're going to be doing when we get back, we're going to be talking about, does the title of the goal reflect the statement? Yes or no? If it's a no for your group, then you'll give some value-add or suggestions on the sticky note. We'll post it up and we'll talk about it, right? So that's the first phase of this. After we've gone through that with all of the different groups, the second step is to take a look at the next part of it, when we went into the goals and the inputs. Everybody remember that, the outcomes? We're going to do the same thing. Does this reflect what we want it to say? Does it align? If yes, great, we hit it. If not, then we want that value-add. Why is this important? You're all looking at me. I'm not going to answer that. I want to hear from you. Why is it important? Why is this important? Yes, Mayor? One more time. This is where our time and money, that's where it's going to go. Yeah? And we want to make sure we're aligned. Because I know when we step together, we step harder. Don't you think? All right, so what questions do you have about what our next steps will look like after lunch today? All right, this is a quiet group today. All right. And it's before lunch. And as always, I'm going to have a little team builder to get us started when we formulate our groups later today right after lunch. All right, if there are no other questions, what time is lunch coming? 11:30 lunch is coming, so you'll get a couple of more minutes to maybe take those calls. And we all come back here at 12:30, right? 12:15? Okay, so yes, 12:15, we'll be back and ready to go. Do I have your commitment? All right, let's go.